I would like to call the October 4th, 2021 call board meeting to order at 1:17 PM. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Smith makes that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Gartrell, is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh, the agenda is approved. We will have a test scores presentation by Destiny Schoe.
Hopefully I'll be able to multi-cast. Good afternoon, thank you for the opportunity to present to you today our Georgia Milestones data, as well as our SAT scores for our 101 pickings high school students who participated. I will also address some of the key things our schools are doing to improve instruction and achievement in their schools and therefore across our district. Just to give you a little bit of background for the 2020-2021 test administration, the Georgia Department of Education applied for two waivers, actually both were denied by the U.S. Department of Education. They did provide some flexibility for districts with a testing window and the promotion-retention guidance was waived for the year and virtual students were not required to report to the building to participate in testing. When we look at reliability and comparability, scores should be interpreted in the context of the pandemic. The tests are designed to measure achievement in a typical instructional environment and 2020-2021 wasn't anything but typical. And year-to-year comparisons should not be made using school or district level data. And just to note, there are no CCRPI scores calculated for this year, however, the Department of Education did release some of the data that is used when the CCRPI scores are calculated, and that's available on the DOE website. This is the non-participation information for Georgia Milestones. It is broken down here by school percentages, and then a parentheses are the actual number of students. And this was based, these percentages were based on enrollment of the first day of the testing window. So for ELA, you can see there we had for the district, 229 students who did not participate and 277 in math. There is a difference, some of our parents opt their students out for reading but allowed them to take the math portion and vice versa. So those are the percentages of students who did not participate in Georgia Milestones. When we look at the reason for non-participation, at the end of each school year, the district is required to report to the Georgia Department of Education a process for accounting or accountability for those students who did not participate. And here is a breakdown of reasons. The first column is COVID. This is used to code virtual students who did not come in for testing, so if they were signed up to participate in virtual learning, then they were not required to come in, so if they did not come in, they were coded as COVID. It also would include students who were in quarantine or isolation during the testing window. Opt-out is the second column there, and that is when parents can send in a letter opting their students out of participation in Georgia Milestones. And the process for that is that a parent submits a letter, there is a form letter that actually circulates around social media, various websites that parents complete and send in. And then it is the role of the administrator at that point to reach out and contact the parent and have a discussion about the importance of participating in assessments, so on and so forth. They have those discussions, those have to be documented, and they maintain those records. And then at the end of the year, we go in and we have to code, or I do on the DOE side, that those students opted out of participating. Unknown is the obvious, we have no reason for why they did not participate. And other would be any type of other illness other than COVID, they were out of town on vacation, whatever the case may be, then they would be classified under other, if we did have a reason but it did not fall into one of those categories. Any questions so far?
When is tested in the period?
Usually it's in the spring. ESCs, and of course tests are done in December and then again in the spring. And it's usually after spring break, in the late spring.
What are some reasons that, since you're the one that codes it, what are some reasons parents give for not wanting their children to take these tests?
Do you mean for opt-outs? We don't, they don't have to give us a reason, they can just say that they choose not to. I know several years ago, goodness, I guess it would be when I was at Harmony, maybe at Tate, there was a big push from some local anti-testing groups or, you know, groups of individuals who were in the community trying to encourage parents not to, you know, have their kids participate, but ask for an exact reason. You know, I don't know, other than it's, we don't want our kids to, you know, to participate because maybe, maybe it's the pressure, they feel like, you know, teachers or schools are putting on students. I don't know that that's necessarily true. I've never seen or heard a teacher do that to students, but, you know, according to parents or according to students who maybe feel some pressure, you know, to do their best, you know, on the test. Those would just be guesses, though. All right, so as we move to look into test scores, I think it's important that we take just a moment and understand the timeline under which we operated since March 12th of 2020. And when I began to put this information together, it was very eye-opening for me, even though I processed the press releases that went out, you know, and one of my own children was impacted by this. But this is a timeline of what it looked like for our district. So on March 12th, which was a Thursday, we sent out a notice to parents announcing that schools were going to be closed beginning the 16th, or that we would be moving to more of a distance learning on Google Classroom. So we encouraged kids and parents to send their kids to school on the 13th so that they could get their, you know, materials and their Chromebooks and the other things that they needed. And we anticipated that that initial access from school was going to be two weeks, so that's what we were rolling with. So Monday is the 16th, on Tuesday, the 17th, that was, that closing was extended through the 31st of March. On March 26th, classes were suspended or being in the class in the building, or the school building was extended to April 24th. On April 2nd, Governor Kemp closed school buildings for the remainder of the school year. On the 16th of April, the Board of Education voted to continue distance learning and to end the school year, that year, on May the 8th. On April the 20th, we converted to more of a four-day of instruction with a flex Friday being the time that teachers would work in small groups or they would, that gave students an opportunity to catch up, to do some reading, you know, on the things that they enjoyed reading. Also, the decision was made to scale back assignments for the middle, junior high, and high school levels. And a decision was made that second semester grades for students would not be lower than the grade they had on March the 13th, which was the last regular day in a classroom. May the 11th through August the 17th is 14 weeks of time. And the reason August 17th is there is because we had a delayed start for two weeks to try to get the Pearson-Kinectus program and get those students with Chromebooks and all the other little things that needed to take place, so we had a two-week delay there. And then you'll see quotation marks, summer slide, because in a minute I'm going to reference learning loss of students from face-to-face instruction. But typically, in the summer months, students do regress on some level because they're not exposed to day-to-day instruction. On August the 17th, we began school for the 2021 school year. We did a stack of start, and then that's when the Virtual Academy started for those students who chose that option. October the 12th, Harmony Elementary closed for about two weeks. They reopened on October the 26th. On October 22nd, Tate Elementary closed, scheduled to reopen on November 5th. On October the 26th, the district made the decision to transition to distance learning, and that was to continue through November the 6th. October the 28th through the 30th, we had to deal with tropical storm and power issues. We're involved in those, but all throughout our community. December 1st was inclement weather. December 16th through the 18th, those were the three days just prior to Christmas break. The decision was made again, you know, based on COVID experiences in the community to transition to distance learning. And then we would return back to school on the 4th of January. On the 4th of January, well, actually before the 4th of January, the decision was made to remain closed for the remainder of that week due again to COVID. January 11th through the 22nd, we were in distance learning mode, so we never actually returned to the building at the time. We just transitioned from Christmas vacation into distance learning. On January the 25th, the decision was made that we would return to in-person classes, which is the time that students return to class. And that's when we implemented the process of looking at staff attendance as a guide to determine when to close schools. Because if we, we have adults in the building, we can teach the kids that can come into the building, but if we don't have adults in the building, we can't teach the children. So that's when we transitioned back to in-person learning. February the 2nd through the 12th, Hill City Elementary closed, and then we were out again on March the 26th for weather, power, and flooding. And then actually, we had a couple of additional closings later on in the year. But I wanted to give you a picture from March of 2020 to March of 2021. And you'll see 27 up in the right-hand corner. When you take all of that information, not including Christmas break or Thanksgiving break, our students lost 27 weeks of face-to-face instruction. Guys, we only go to school 36 weeks a year. So when you start calculating all of that time and you begin to look at, you know, at our test scores, it really makes you step back and go, hold on a second, let's take another breath and let's really look into this.
27 days, yeah.
I want to say that, you know-
You say that was 27 weeks, not 27 days.
27 weeks, yeah. So our teachers and administrators, you know, our families, I think everyone did the best we knew to do. We were in a situation that was new to all of us, and we were definitely in uncharted And I will say this, because I know that our teachers, our administrators, everyone worked very hard to make this work, but I think also we recognize that the best quality education comes from face-to-face learning, you know, for our students. Okay, now we'll begin to move into our test scores. We have four achievement-level descriptors. We have beginning, developing, proficient, and distinguished. You may also hear them referred to as level one, level two, level three, or level four. Beginning learners do not, that's level one, do not yet demonstrate proficiency in the knowledge and skills necessary at their current grade level and therefore will not be ready for future grade levels without substantial academic support. Developing learners demonstrate partial proficiency, but they still require additional academic support. Proficient and distinguished learners are ready, they have the knowledge and skills necessary for the current grade level, and they are ready to move on or to work beyond what the next grade level provides for them. We will start by looking at third-grade ELA scores. You will see that I've given you district, RISA, and state numbers. Our RISA district includes Cherokee, Gilmer, Murray, and Whitfield County, in addition to Aron County. So you have for our district, developing and, sorry, developing and above, that's levels two, three, and four. And that's used, when we think about level two, those are the kids that, for the most part, if you provide them that additional academic support that they need, you can generally push them along enough that they'll be ready for the grade level, but they do require that additional support regardless of where that comes from, if it comes from remediation time through response to intervention, if it's before-after-school tutoring, just whatever support we can provide to help those level-two or developing students. Proficient and above are the threes and fours. So those are our top two brackets, and, you know, we would really like to have 100% in those two areas. And that's what, you know, what we're striving to do. But this is third-grade ELA scores. As you can see, if you look at the developing and above, we were below the RISA and the state in this area. I'm going to go through these and just so, you know, I'm going to share with you some of the things our schools are doing to address these deficits. Next up is third-grade math. Again, we're at 75%. RISA and the state, the state's 1% higher than we are. And again, I'm going to say with those level-two students, remember, with support, we can increase that proficient and above number. Fourth-grade ELA, again, we're below both RISA and state. Fourth-grade math, our threes and fours in this area were above the state, same group but proficient and above, were also above in developing and above as well. Fifth-grade ELA, we're below RISA and state. Fifth-grade math, we are below again. Fifth-grade science, we are below. Sixth-grade ELA, we are above the state in level threes and fours, as well as level two, so in both of those groups, we're above. Sixth-grade math, we're above the state and RISA. Seventh-grade ELA, seventh-grade math, we're above the state in levels two, three, and four, but still in the good RISA. Eighth-grade ELA, we're above the state for levels two through four, and we're tied with the RISA. We're also above in threes and fours as well.
You know, with some of these, we take margin of error, we're right there with them, even when it's just a few percentage points.
Eighth-grade math, we're above the state in two through four, and actually in threes and fours as well. Eighth-grade science, you can see those numbers are below 54% of the state, and then we tied with them at 54%. We are above the state in levels three or four, which are our top two categories. Eighth-grade social studies, we're slightly below the state. Those are all what we call EOG or end-of-grade tests, those are for grades three through eight. Now we're going to move into what we call EOCs or end-of-course tests. Those are tests that are given for areas at the high school, American Lit, Biology, U.S. History, and Algebra. And then for eighth-grade science, those students participate and take the Physical Science EOC. So in American Lit, they're tied with the state. In Algebra I, above the state, tied with the RISA. Sorry. Biology, in the category of threes and fours and proficient and above, over top of the state at 41%. Physical science, those eighth graders knocked it out of park. They scored 100% in developing and above. So they have 100% pass rate. About approximately 45 students participate in that year-long course. Next up, we have United States History, and we are above the state in both two through four and threes and fours. Don't go crazy over the colors, but I want to try to explain this, because you can't really compare year-to-year when you begin to look at these assessments. But what you can, in some ways, is look at cohort groups of students. And I'll be honest, right before, right before this meeting, I took a spreadsheet from Technology that has the students who were here in third grade in 2019, the students who were still here in 2021, in fifth grade, because I was curious to see how many students made up that cohort in third grade that were still here in the fifth grade. So I don't have that information, but just yet, because I haven't had a chance to look at it. But what I want you to do is, let's go all the way over to 2015, and let's look at third grade. This is for ELA. So we see that that group of third-grade students on the ELA Milestones scored 63% in levels two, three, and four. And as you follow that purple box diagonally down to the left, you can see how that group as a cohort performed moving, you know, forward. Of course, in 2020, we had no assessments, so that column is blank. But if you want to take just a minute and look at that, so if you look at 2018 third grade, they were at 72%. 2019, that group went up to 78% in fourth grade, and then in sixth grade in 2021, they were at 73%.
It's better when you look at it that way.
We'll let you look, yeah, you can see.
See the progression most of the time.
And, you know, and then, given the information about what school looked like for those students in 2020, you know, some of our grade levels even went up. If you look at sixth grade in 2019, they were 72%, and then in eighth grade, they went to 80%.
So it looks like they probably made progress even when they weren't tested.
If you look at that group that's on top in that pinkish shade, 2016, if you follow that down, that's a pretty powerful success. Or you see, it's pretty much steady, and then it stayed basically level 2019, 2018. But they're really, really strong, even have to call it that, really strong score compared to where it was.
So that just lets you look at, look at that information with cohort groups. And the same thing here with integrated scores for math. I color-coded these as well, so you can see.
This is really helpful, Destiny, I appreciate you doing this.
So you will see in math, if you look from 2019 to 2021, I think in most of those areas, it did decline, with the exception of fifth grade in 2019 to seventh grade, they did increase 14%.
A special teacher, I do well with color.
So hopefully you'll find that helpful.
If you don't practice it, it seems like you do have diminished skills, and that's pretty understandable.
I think that's why, you know, we have the summer slide. You think about it, when kids go home at the end of school, they're done. And, you know, unless they read or, you know, do that kind of stuff, it does impact them sometimes.
Pretty much, then the first nine weeks of the next year review.
You do. That's typically what happens, when they start back, then you have to spend that time while you catch up. All right, next we'll look at science scores. Sorry, these are not color-coded, and if you look carefully at this, you'll see mine. So in 2015 and 2016, all grade levels, three, eight, participated in Georgia Milestones. And that's why they both have scores. Then you'll begin to see NA, and that's when the Department of Education made changes to the assessments for those grade levels. You will see that fifth grade and eighth grade do continue to participate in science milestones. But it's difficult to look at cohorts at that. Next, we'll look at social studies. Same thing, 2015 and 16, grades three through eight participated in Milestones, and then up until 2019, fifth and eighth grade, and then in 2021, eighth grade only participated in social studies, so they're the only grade level that takes the social studies EOG. Okay, when we begin to look at our EOC courses, you'll notice in 2020, there is a winter administrations score but no spring. That's because we were able, that test is administered in December, so we were able to have scores to report. However, we did not test in the spring of 2020. And again, you really can't follow cohorts with EOCs. You would have to look at more of who the instructor was. It would be more about, you know, who the teacher is, not necessarily who the kids are, because the cohorts change from spring to, or from winter to spring. All right, next up, you have American Lit. All right, so using the scores, Georgia Department of Education provided some guidance to districts this year that it should be used as punitive or for any type of accountability applications. There were no CCRPI scores issued for 2021 due to a federal waiver. There were no CSI or TSI schools identified in 2021. Again, this was the result of a federal waiver. I will say that we do have one school that is a TSI school, and those schools just tend to continue until we get to a point where there's enough substantial data that will allow them to be removed from that.
Is that Harmony?
Yes, it is Harmony. And of course, in 2020-2021, the test score impact on teacher and leader evaluations, let's not name. So of all this information, probably the most important, I apologize for all the information that's on this slide, hopefully you'll be able to take some time to read this, but it is important information. So schools are charged each year with developing a school improvement plan, just as the district is required to create their district improvement plan, along with several other things required through federal programs and various other grants. So all of these things need to intertwine and relate to one another. So when we look at how the district is supporting students or what this overall plan looks like, so the identified need is that we need systematic implementation of effective strategies for instruction that promote mastery of content for all levels of learners, not just the threes and fours. We need to do this for ones and twos, threes and fours, so it is all learners. So some of the things that we are doing, and this list is definitely not the only things that we're doing. So some of the things that we are doing, and this list is definitely not the only things that we're doing, common assessments developed and utilized by all teachers. Teachers are developing their assessments. They know their content, and so they're working with their academic coaches, with their administrators, their leadership team, and they are developing common assessments for students. The protocol for analyzing student work, established by the district to make instructional decisions and to differentiate to meet the needs of all levels of learners. This goes back to, you see I have TEACs number six. This is the Teacher Keys. This is the Teacher Evaluation System that's in place from the Georgia Department of Education. So this specifically ties back to, to that standard. School-level administrators will have oversight in ensuring that common assessments, pacing guides, and the protocol for analyzing student work are analyzed. So again, administrators are responsible for the things that happen in their building, and, and this goes back to that. Professional learning strategies gained during professional learning opportunities will be implemented in classrooms. I'm sure that Ms. Finley can relate to this, that sometimes as educators, we go to professional learning, and we come back, and we never really use what we've learned. So this is key, and this is critical. So our academic coaches, Mrs. Walker, as the Director of Curriculum, are working together to really put these things in place with administrators. We have a second cohort of elementary growing readers. This is a reading initiative, but implementing the second cohort of this initiative. And then we have created reading initiatives, training, and strategies to help those students in grades four through nine. So growing readers is what we call for the elementary schools, but reading initiative is for grades four through nine. Accountability for developing lessons and providing instruction in mathematics, which includes an emphasis on contextual math, number sense, and reasoning skills. And if you've looked at our math score, you know that we have some work to do in that area. And from the district down to the schools, you will, you will see that that is a focus. Systemic expectations for instruction, which include providing explicit instruction. So what that means is there's a structure to your lesson. There is an opening, there is a work time, and then there is a closing of that lesson to demonstrate what success looks like. So if students have acquired the knowledge or understanding of what is being presented to them, then that's modeled so that everyone in that classroom has an understanding of where their learning should be. And then, of course, modeling expectations, and whether that's done by the teacher on an individual basis, small group, or in a whole group setting, depending on what the students need. But that's just kind of just a quick little glance from an instruction standpoint for the district of where we are. Now we'll jump into some of the things our schools are doing. This is elementary school. This is a collection of goals that they have together. What you will find is important, or something that's critical, is that we address the learning losses of our students. As you know, twenty-seven weeks is a long time. And if I were being honest with you, I'm not sure that that's something that, that is humanly possible to replicate. But I think our teachers and our administrators are really doing, really doing the best that they can in trying to find what works and trying to put into place things that, you know, students need. And you will see, and you already know by looking at the budget, that they've used the opportunity to bring in those parent professionals and those interventionists, because we know that human instruction is the best kind of instruction we can offer our kids. The, the distance learning worked when that's all we had to work, you know. But hopefully, we'll be able to stay in school and keep going. It's equally important to understand that we have to provide the tools and learning opportunities that also equip our teachers. So you will see in each of these grade levels that there is some form of professional learning. These are also different times that, you know, when you look at the, the number of years our teachers have been teaching, you know, all of them are recent graduates that may have some of the, you know, the latest tricks and tools of the trade. But hopefully, through some professional learning, we're able to help build those skills so that in turn, they're better equipped to work with those students when we're in situations where they're having to do distance or virtual learning. But in elementary school, they're increasing instructional support. This is through contracted, contracted services, where these individuals are trained, retired teachers going in, pushing in, working with small groups of students, really trying to focus and close those learning gaps that have been created. Interventionists or even teachers. I mentioned before a rigorous balanced literacy program. This covers all areas of reading and writing for English Language Arts. They'll continue to support the cohort one teachers. Those are the teachers that were previously trained in growing readers. Increased parent engagement, that's one of the things that's required through Title I and federal programs, is that we have to build the capacity of our parents to work with their students at home. And this responsibility falls back to the school and coming up with ways that are appropriate to their grade level standards and their learning requirements that they help those parents be able to better work with their students. Again, creating math lessons, integrating technology to support literacy and writing, professional learning communities to discuss data, progress, and plan for instruction. And one of the key focuses is really, you know, sometimes we do these things and we get this data, but we never really, you know, we don't know what to do with it. So the schools are really beginning to focus on what do we do with this? How do we use this information to change what we're doing in the classroom to impact student learning? Develop common assessments, promote positive behavior. The academic coaches at the elementary school levels, or actually maybe all levels, are doing a book study with a RISA English Language Arts specialist. They have individuals employed there, math specialists and English Language Arts specialists. And our academic coaches with, along with Ms. Walker, are working with that. So that, again, helps build the toolbox of those individuals. And then elementary and middle school teachers are working with a math specialist on things like modeling, reasoning, and other math strategies. At the middle school, they are working to increase instructional support through contracted services of parent professionals. They have designed their master schedule that includes a specific remediation and enrichment, enrichment time. I believe, Mr. Thompson, I think those students have twenty-five to thirty minutes of dedicated time that focuses on remediation and enrichment. So if it's a child that has demonstrated some type of learning loss, whether, or, you know, a lack of knowledge, whether it's from a benchmark or, you know, milestones or whatever it may be, whatever information they're looking at, and I would say, they don't just use one source of data. They use information from teachers and then, you know, look at actual assessment scores. But they, they would focus on that remediation. But if you have a child that is gifted or a high performer, that's on grade level and just needs a push beyond, that's also a time that those students receive enrichment. So it's not that they're, you know, left to the side. They're also being challenged as well. At the middle school, they provide before and after-school tutoring opportunities. They have professional learning communities for their teachers, again, to help disaggregate that data and plan for instruction. Their administrators and academic coaches are doing more frequent classroom walkthroughs to make sure if there are any type of instructional concerns, that they're able, you know, to address those. And it's not, it's not like a gotcha walkthrough. It's, you know, just to give them some, you know, ideas, especially with an academic coach, because the academic coach is not an administrator. They are a coach. And the design of that is to go in and support those classroom teachers. And of course, monitoring data. They do host parent academy meetings, which is where they teach parents how to use the data, how to look at where their children are on benchmarks and that sort of thing. They also provide dragon time, which is where they help students learn a skill that helps them to better interact with their peers. And they host morning meetings to hopefully get the kids off on a positive start for the day. The junior high school, again, much of the same as you begin to get up into the upper levels, they utilize strategies to foster grading, greater reading stamina. So at this point, we're trying to get our kids to read for a longer duration of time. They provide a remedial English Language Arts and math class for students. And these students receive not only teacher support, but they're also working with diagnostic and learning support that's offered through various programs, such as SP Math and Read 180. So those, help those students and, you know, to help them grow the skills deficits that they may have as well. Professional learning, again, same focus, trying to build those toolboxes of our teachers and staff. And at the junior high, they're implementing a student growth initiative through Student Services to help bolster advocacy, self-reliance, and self-respect for students, and also giving strategies to those students to help them to have a voice, learn, to be advocates for themselves in situations as it's needed. At the high school, increased instructional support with additional personnel to address learning loss in the academic areas. After-school tutoring is offered two to three times a week at that level. They've added existing certified teachers in some areas using extended day funds. Again, a focus on professional learning to analyze the data, to discuss teaching strategies, and then to look at those common assessments. And they're also doing benchmarks, so that they are monitoring where their students are every four and a half weeks. And then implementing reading and writing strategies. Reading and writing is no longer just for the ELA class. It's across all academic areas. So that's where we are with the high school. Now we're going to take a look at our exciting SAT scores. Here is the mean score. I do have them ranked by the total mean score. Cherokee County took first place with eleven twenty-five, and we were second with eleven twenty-three. So very neck and neck. So congratulations. I believe we had a hundred and one students who participated. So overall, we were in second in our RISA district.
That's great.
In our reading and writing, you'll notice Pickens County is the first-place slot. We had a mean score of five seventy-one. Cherokee County was behind us two points with five sixty-nine. And then in math, again, we're second to Cherokee County with a difference of four points. We're at five fifty-two, and they're at five fifty-six. And let me go back a couple of slides. If you look at this, you'll see that Cherokee and Pickens are neck and neck for that first and second slot. But what you do notice is once you get to that third slot, it's like a thirty or forty-point gap. You know, so we are, our, our students, I should say, are doing a great job of, you know, of performing on the SAT.
And I would say our teachers are performing a great job.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And it's roughly three percent all the way across. We've got, what, forty-two, almost forty-three hundred students? And I believe Cherokee County has forty-five thousand, so it's going to be a fairly close comparison.
All right, that's all I have. I know that was a lot. Any questions? It's on, tell me.
It's on E-Board, and I sent it, I sent it to everybody in an email.
Okay.
That's right. Last week.
And I'm actually updated this issue up this last week.
Okay.
Yeah, it was old storage.
This was, this is actually updated from what you sent them last week.
I think what we sent last week was just the school.
Yeah, that's what we're working on.
Well, I appreciate all your work, and this is, I, I am much more hopeful. I mean, I'm more excited, it's positive. I think, I think our kids and the teachers, obviously, have done, and the parents have done much better than, than I think the circumstances would have predicted.
I mean, when you look at, you know, twenty-seven weeks, that's, that's a lot, but, you know.
We do have work to do, but I think everybody's worked really hard, and I think the scores show it.
And we're, you know, we're, we're making progress in, you know, equipping our teachers with the tools that they need, and our students, and, you know, and our, our families. So I'm hopeful that, you know, things will look, you know, different for us. And we do have some resources that allows to, to make some predictions in our district. So we kind of know what direction we're in.
Well, thank you to everybody who's worked so hard this last year and a half.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dad. Thank you. Awesome, Destiny.
All right, the next item on the agenda is budgetary discussion with our Chief Financial Officer and our Chief Operating Officer.
You guys want to come on up? Madam Chair, there had been, there had been some discussion among the board and myself and, and these two individuals about some additional things that we could do to retain and to encourage attendance with some of the CARES money and everything. And some of the board members had some individual questions that they wanted to ask. So I thought it would be good if we had Amy and Stacy for those things that involve operation to, to address those, to address those questions that you guys may have. There's a couple of things we are already, and Amy, help me out. I don't know where we are in the adoption process, or the approval process, I should say. We already have, as I, as I talked to the board, we've got a couple of, couple of things out there with some, some bonuses based on attendance with, with some of our groups of people. It appears, and Amy scolded me if I'm wrong, but it appears that we are going to be able to do those things with the CARES money. We weren't sure initially, and I shared those concerns with the board. Some of the, some of those people are contract, contracted and not directly our employees, so we were not sure. So it looks like though we are, we are headed in that direction now and are going to be able to use some of that CARES money to establish some bonuses. One of the things that we are looking at doing, one of the issues that we are having here is issues with subs. And you'll notice, and we've had conversations, several, several counties, especially those south of us, have, have really, have come out and aggressively done things to keep their, their subs. And so I've been talking with the chiefs and Amy in particular. And one of the things that we are looking at doing is adding an attendance bonus to our subs of twenty dollars a day, payable at the, at the end of each month, so using CARES money. So every day, a person accepts a subbing job. Not only will they get paid for that, but they will also receive a twenty-dollar bonus per day. So if they answer the call every single day in the month and sub every single day, that'd be an additional four hundred dollars a month that they will be able to learn. So that's, so that's one of the things that we're looking at doing. We're also looking at possibly extending that attendance-type bonus to some other areas. But that, generally, that's some of the things we're looking at. I know some of you guys had specific questions, and so I thought it would be best if, if we just opened it up and, and talked about, there are some questions about the bus drivers and A-Scale and things like that. So I thought it would be best to just give you guys an opportunity. And I've already prepped Amy on, on the questions that, that some of you have been asking me to be able to talk to you about the actual dollar amounts and the funding and what pot of money that would come out of if we did certain things. So I will open the floor up to the board. And we've got, we've got both of our resident experts here, and, and both of them have been a huge help to me as, as we have, as we have gone through this. They've been, they have been extremely valuable and very helpful. So if you guys would, would like to address with Amy or with Stacy some of the things that we've been talking about, and she can give you some more specific numbers on that if you'd like to.
I want you to ask. I have, I have some information based on what we had talked about, so. Do you want to ask questions? Do you want me to just talk about the things I know and then you ask?
Do you want her to go ahead and do that first? Would that, would that be okay? All right, yeah, go ahead.
I'm going to pass this around, because I wasn't sure what format this was coming in. One thing that we have discussed, currently, our bus drivers are on a schedule that goes from zero to nineteen steps. This follows the, we actually look back thirty-four years. It's been in a similar format to this for that thirty-four years. We pay. We pay a state base, which is a required state base, which, yes, we can waive, but we chose not to. And we add a local supplement too. Okay, our current bus driver schedule, and you'll see there, it is going to be page three in your packet, but I'm going to talk about the first page first. The local supplement on step zero is the state-based required pay plus approximately 42% of that amount added to it as a local supplement. Beyond step zero, there's an additional 1% increase of the total state and local salary together that continues through step 19. And that, the current schedule is page three in that packet. That's what has been approved right now by the board.
Step one is a 1% increase of state and local.
Step one, yes. Step one and beyond is a 1% increase of them added together. What is on page two is a draft of, if we pulled that schedule from zero to 19 years out to zero to 30 years. One reason this has not been done is in our Risa area and much of the state, we have followed the old state schedule, which was zero to 19. Do we have to? No. So it is a local decision on that local amount that you contribute to the salary and how many steps that you put into the schedule. So that is something that is available to change if we so choose. Something I want to point out is, we have 61 drivers right now, at this moment. It can change tomorrow. But 69% of our drivers have 10 years or less experience. That means they're on step nine, zero to nine. We have six drivers that are on the very top step, which is step 19. One thing I was asked was if we took those people on that top step and actually pulled the schedule out to 30 and put them on the appropriate step, how much would it cost us? So we calculated that for the six drivers, and it would be approximately $7,400 salary and benefit cost to do that at this time. Over the next five years, if we retain the same staff, we only have four additional people who would cross that 19-year threshold over the next five years. We don't have veteran drivers. We have very, very few. So 42, so 69% of our staff had 10 years or less. We don't have very many that are over the 10-year mark, which means we're not retaining. Make sense? So now tell me what the questions are on this part.
This is one of my items, and this is a lot of good information, thank you. What did you say, over the next five years, what would it cost?
Now, to pull the current ones on the top step to the appropriate schedule, because all six of them would actually move up at least one step. Nobody hits 30. I believe it's one would go to step 20, we had somebody like a 23, a 24, and three 20s, but it'd be $7,400 to bring them up. Over the next five years, we only have four other people that would, would go across the 19-year mark. I did not calculate. Because it's a, it's a tier increase. It's a very small increase.
My thoughts were, this could just be for a district that desperately needs bus drivers, like most districts, this could be a nice, very, very low-cost incentive to try and keep drivers and possibly recruit drivers. Two little questions about, is there anyone that we, any employee group that we do go step to 30 now, currently?
Yes. Of the non-certified...
I thought we did.
There are most of, most of them, I'll say this. Two, two or three years ago, we pulled most of, most of the schedules from a zero to 19, which also matches the certified schedule, by the way, which is actually a tier schedule at state level. We pulled most of them up to 30. The increase at the non-certified level does not cost what it does at the certified level. But that was something that, some interest was in that when we got into the budget workshop, so we did pull them all up. The bus drivers are a separate schedule, so are teachers, so are certified staff, so we have three separate schedules. And y'all approved those, I think, in either July or August board meeting. So those are things, you know, it's, this was kind of the normal habit, do we have to stick to that? No. So, but now, non-certified and then, we're not on a schedule. So this would be paras, any kind of clerical staff, bookkeepers, food service, maintenance, all those groups.
So we do have groups of people that do get the rates all the way up to 30.
Yes, most, most, all the non-certified staff does. Bus drivers did not, and we had just a few, like, admin-type people that don't.
I guess I omitted to see that, but I thought we had pretty much everything on a 30-year schedule. It probably should be uniformed all the way up.
And, and we almost do, that is the truth. Now, the folks in the transportation office, the office and mechanics have a 30-year step schedule.
Teachers top it, 21 years?
Teachers are actually an unusual schedule. They actually have a schedule that starts, and this is all state-driven. Zero, one, two, if you're in Georgia, your experience is in Georgia or not, you may jump in Georgia from a zero to a three. If you come from outside of Georgia for your first year or two, you may go from a zero, one, two, and then be able to go to a three. There are lots of little rules, we follow the rules. Then it goes single years until you hit step nine, and it's a nine, 10, then you have the dual years, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18. I may have done it wrong. Yeah, no, 19, 20, and then 21-plus, that's where it stops. Now, if you get into extending that schedule, that's a very expensive option. That is a...
Well, as far as this one, I know we're not taking action today, but I would, I personally would be in favor of extending that to the board.
I do, before anybody else says, hold up. Page four, I do want you to see how we earn for this, because it is a surprising thing. If you ever get somebody at Capital to listen to us, this is one I would really like to go after, and I have at different times. The fourth, the last page in your packet is the FY22 pupil transportation allotment for us, for FY, for this current year. You notice up there at the top says FY22 PBE funds, drivers, allocated buses and actual buses. You see 36 as a total, we have said 61. This was frozen in 1999, earnings ratio was frozen in 1999, and it never changed. This is something that is big money. We budget over $3.5 million, and if you'll look down there at your bottom of the, where there's a little table, we earned $545,911.57. This is an item that, the funding does not follow the state formula. They stopped it so many years ago and have never picked it back up. This is a big expense, especially for our county. This is something we need to fight for. This is something that, you know, it's, they need to raise the funding ratio back up to something that's somewhere close to what we actually run. So they fund a portion of 36 drivers, we run 61, 61 rounds. So I just want you to have the whole picture of, you know, sometimes if someone asks about something.
Maybe we should lure some of our elected state officials here with the promise of barbecue and actually have a bag of rocks to beat them over the head with until they adjust then.
And what we earn for a driver's schedule is highlighted there in yellow at $9,384.15. Get a little bit of Social Security and a little, sick leave, sick leave, a whole $125 per driver for those 36, and $30 for the required medical exam for them here. Just so y'all have the whole picture on that.
What is the, do you have the bottom line cost for the county, the part that we have to pay, what we're over, what they...
It would be the difference in, I believe the budget this year is 3.526 million minus that 545,000, so three, close, you're sitting on...
Close to $3 million.
Three million dollars, yes.
That the state isn't allowing for, that, that the local taxpayers are paying for.
That's why most systems stay on that state. They don't leave that state pay scale because the state doesn't like it.
And we do, we do a large local supplement, but we're, we're competitive with other counties around us when it comes to the local portion. We're all suffering, we're all scrambling for drivers right now, it's across the state of Georgia. And if you go through any kind of area across Georgia, you're going to see those buses with those signs on them looking for bus drivers. It is not a Pickens County issue, it is a statewide issue. I'm assuming it would probably be nationwide, but I, I know around Georgia, I've seen enough to, and heard enough.
We actually had one legislature come to us and say that a person with the Transportation Department of Georgia said that if we could, if they could tweak the training requirements so it didn't take quite so long to get trained, would that help? And that would be helpful. Right now, we have to follow their guidelines, and I know why, because, you know, if a driver is actually liable for an accident, they can be sued, not, they don't have sovereign immunity if they are liable for what happened. If they're not liable, they can't be touched just out of, out of front of a lawsuit. So it's, it's, the training's very important, but the rigor they make us do it at and the time it takes to do it, it, it runs people off. It really does. It's really tough.
Have more questions about that schedule?
All right, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
That's all they can get in?
Yeah, any other questions on, on the pay scales, everybody? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Another item that was brought to, or I was asked to prepare some information for...
Amy, are you wondering about the sick leave? Is that what you're wondering about right then?
Talking about...
Are you going to talk about that, the sick leave buyback?
Yes.
Okay. She's talking about that now.
Okay.
It's like, and that's what she's going to be saying, what about the sick leave buyback?
All right, while y'all pass that out, I'm going to, I'm going to kind of give a little information. There is a board policy, this board policy, get some eyeballs here. A-G-A-R-H addresses sick leave. And I have highlighted a section in the policy. For this policy, public school retirement employees may be paid for accumulated sick leave over 45 days annually, once a year. This group includes food service workers and its non-supervisory workers. Food service workers, we have one maintenance person, I believe, and then monitors and bus drivers. So you have a group of a little over 100 individuals, and you add them all together. Currently, we are paying according to board policy. So if this is changed, there's a board policy consideration. They are allowed $25 per day for any unused sick leave over 45 days. So once a year, we send out letters to all eligible staff, hey, would you like us to pay these for you? Typically do this in June, most of them come back in June, every now and then they're in July, but we still pay them. But, and we'll pay this out. So over the last three years, because the last two years have been different, but they, we looked at the last three. The three-year average, we paid for 208.25 days at $25 a day, plus the benefits attached, have cost us about $5,820. Okay, see, that's not too bad. But we increase it to $55 a day. That pool is large. The eligible days on our books right now, today, we pulled it today just to make sure, is 990 and a half days. If all of them, when we do this in June, ask for them and have not used them off, it's $60,900 if we had to pay them out. So when you increase it, it's more, that would be more than doubling it, it's going to make it a lot more attractive. That's money. Here's the caveat, the policy. Policy does not apply to just P-Serve about certain things. A period of time from, and I'm going to have to look at my notes for this one because this is back before my time, from '87, '88 school year, the board approved to pay any employee, any employee, for any days they wanted us to buy from them. They did this from FY '88 to FY '98, and they had one more carryover year in FY '99. So there are certified staff who, they're going toward retirement and they want to buy back some days, they can buy those days back to use toward retirement at $25 a day plus pocket. So if this policy is changed, that, the consideration that has to do with that has to be involved in that, because it doesn't just affect P-Serve at that point, it affects TRS. We would probably have to, and I would want GSBA in on this all the way through, because there's a page and a half of OCGA references that tie to this particular leave policy that I did not have time from Friday till today to go through each one to see what it could, how it could affect us. But we would have to make sure that we do what we are really intending to do on paper inward in that policy to make sure that we do it like it's recommended by the superintendent. Because if they, if we pay $25 for it, they pay back $25 if they need them. Right now, they have the option to buy those days back. Say they need to use them for sick leave. They can buy them back. If they have to have surgery and be out as a P-Serve person, they can use it now. TRS people, they, they want those days to put toward retirement. We have people right now that want to retire in the next year or two, that they're going to buy their days back.
Who are you talking about as P-Serve? Who are you meaning?
P-Serve is, non-TRS eligible employees are eligible for public school retirement. That is food service workers, certain maintenance employees, and bus drivers and monitors.
This is still all...
That 100, a little over 100 group.
That's the only people eligible for the buyback?
Yeah, at this time.
Okay.
Now, the others...
That's what I thought you could, you confused me a little, and I thought you were saying that...
But back in time, there was about a 10, 11-year period when any employee could do it, and they still can buy those days back at $25 a day.
It just wouldn't make sense for them to do it if they're in TRS.
If they're in TRS, if, if they need more days to retire, it would make a, every bit 100% sense for them to go back and buy those days, because they can use it to toward retirement.
Use it towards your, okay.
But we have it, we have a book, we have everybody in there who's eligible and who's not. But that ended in '99, so for the last...
I got you. I got you.
22 years, they have not been able to do that. It just kind of complicates it, it complicates the policy. We need to make sure the verbage is right. But say, now let's go back to our P-Serve group, our 100-plus, our food service, our bus drivers, our monitors, and some maintenance. So we increased how much we're going to give them if they want us to buy the days. But if they want to buy them back, they have to buy them back at the same rate that we bought them, which means if they need those days back, they would have to pay the 55-plus FICA to get them back. When we, we've done research back as quickly as we could, we are not aware of anyone who's actually done that. I know in the last five years, we get going through every single payroll that we've run every year, it, you know, it gets to be a lot. But we're not aware, and when I say we, the payroll department and I have gone through very quickly trying to receive, we remember anyone actually doing this. Policy allows it, I said, as soon as we change something, somebody will need to do this. But if we change the rules, the rules for them to buy those days back change too. Does that make sense? But now those that, and I think what we have to do is write it, where the ones that we bought at $25 a day back from '88 to '99, we would have to stay with that. So if they could buy them back at that rate, I don't think it's right to, to change that.
So it could be tracked when the change was?
We have it all. We have it all.
To bring y'all up to speed a little, and, or you may know this, I did not know this, but what brought this up was, I had some bus drivers ask me about this and tell me about this, which I was not familiar with. And why I think it's important, in my opinion, that we do this, is because for a period of reasons. First of all, correct me if I'm wrong, this $25 a day was established in the 90s.
It's the same, the same earning sheet that you see, it has not changed since '99?
'99. So this hasn't been adjusted over 20 years. The, and why this is important to those people is because they're not eligible for TRS. So there's no incentive, there is no reward basis, there is, there's $25. There's very little reward or incentive for those people who come to work, who don't take advantage of their sick days, who are here for us when we need them. All they get right now is they get $25 a day for not being here. It would cost us more money if they left, if they took, used their sick day, it would cost us more to get a substitute. So I think it's really important we adjust... So I think it's really important we adjust this, in my opinion. And I was, I'm glad they brought it to my attention because I was not aware of this.
I wasn't either.
I will throw this out there because this is something, this is one of the items Mr. Young was talking about that we have some leeway with. Through some of, some of the grants we have with Chrisa and ARC, um, when it comes to retaining staff and attendance issues, there are certain things you are allowed to do, just like we were talking about with the substitutes. We're going to add $20 a day, and what we're going to do on that, just to kind of make sure everything's clear, if you're a sub and you work, and we're going to do it so it's a separate check so they can see it. You work the month of August, for every day you show up and work, we're going to give you 20 extra dollars for that day. But you're going to get it, they're going to do calendar months. They're going to, actually ESS is working with us and they're going to do a separate invoice for that where they get a separate check. And that money is eligible to go into the ARC grant, so it is not going to be paid for locally. If it helps with retention and attendance of those subs, then we can choose to continue it the next year or continue it in future years. If it doesn't have an effect, if it doesn't help us, then we have the option to not continue it. But it will be a completely separate check. And yes, it, it could be up to about $400 a month. Now, on Christmas months, we don't work as much, any month, we don't work 20 to 22 days, it's going to be less. But for every day they're willing to come in, there are lots of things like that we can do for incentive for retention and attendance, especially when it comes to COVID. We've got plenty of background data because you do have to provide data saying, show us how you're hurting, show us how it's changed since COVID hit. We have plenty of data to support this. And we actually have a, kind of a soft on paper confirmation, but we actually have to do a budget amendment. We have to do, um, with ESS, we would have to do an amendment to the contract and things, so that will take a little bit to get that in place. But it, it sounds like we're, we're on the move with it already, we're trying to, in the background, trying to go ahead and get all that built.
And I'll definitely be interested to see the data, to see once we start paying those checks, how the attendance impacts, how it is impacted, whether or not it is.
Well, with that in mind, keep in mind, you can do a, a, maybe not a per day, but a, um, I don't know if we would want to do a monthly or a quarterly. You can do an attendance incentive through these grants for the bus drivers. Our retention rate has decreased during this time. We were struggling before and we're really struggling now. We do not have a sub pool. We are pulling people from the office every day. Our transportation supervisor drives constantly. All the staff drive, I mean, anybody, you have to leave a couple of mechanics in the shop in case someone breaks down, but we are putting teachers on the bus. Now, we're paying them too, but I mean, we are putting everybody we can possibly pull on a bus that has a CDL to drive for us.
What, uh, what are we doing in terms of a, a bonus already for a hiring bonus or something? What, what are we doing?
A $100 hiring bonus if you work 90 days.
Pay a boy at the end of 90?
Right, pay a boy at the end of 90 days. Could pay a referral to anyone that refers one, $250 if they work 90 days.
And we also pay them to train.
Right.
What are the longevity bonuses too?
The longevity, what we did, let's see, two, two, three years. 18, 19, or 19, 20, one of those two years. We did a, we increased the bus driver pay by $2 an hour, and we created a longevity supplement. Once you complete five years with us as of July 1st of any year, and, and you come back to work the next school year, you gotta come in. So we don't want to pay them until August. At five years, you get $250, 10, um, 500, 750, 1,000, 1,200, 1,500, all the way up to the 30-year mark. So that is something we did.
In increments of five years?
In increments of five years, and it goes up 250 every time. They like that. But that's, but, uh, monitors are eligible for that also, so it's drivers and monitors. It's not the office staff and it's not the mechanics, but it's the monitors and drivers. But we can, the thing is about the ARC money is this is temporary. So once we start something with that money, it has to make progress. We have to be able to show data saying, we went from a 25% fill rate with subs to a 50% fill rate. Or, uh, we, you know, we've got to have, be able to have a measurable mark to go after. After two years, if it's not doing a whole lot, then you have to decide if you're going to keep it. And if you keep it, it might not be able to be in ARC. It's got to have some movement, it's got to show improvement, that's a big thing with this ARC money. Cares one, what we call Cares one, in Chrisa, we're not quite as data-driven, the last one is. And that's where all the big money is. So if it's something we can use as a tool, if it's effective, then keep in mind too, we may be having to pick it up locally after a couple of years, if it's something that works for us and we need to do. So just kind of keep that in the back of your mind, anytime we do say ARC money, if it's something we want to sustain, then we'll be having to pick it up in the general fund budget at some point. If this money, this cares, Chris, ARC money is not going to last forever, but we do have it for a couple more years.
I personally like the buyback of the sick day getting rid of. Uh, I think that's the simplest thing for us in the long run, and?
It seems very fair.
Yeah, it seems fair to me. At first, I had to really think, I went home, I did some calculating myself and think it's not a lot of money, but it's important to lead.
But I just want to make sure too, people understood, it's not just bus drivers, it is, it is that larger group.
We all do.
So as long as everybody understands, it's not just bus drivers. I, I think still food service will appreciate it.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Oh, yes.
They need some support.
Yes, absolutely.
Stacy on bus drivers, the application process, that all online now?
Yep.
I, I just wonder sometimes with some of the older?
If they'll come in, we'll help them do it, right there in the office.
Excellent.
Yeah, we always do. Uh, but there's a lot of things, even the state of safety training yearly is online now. We have to hold our hands a lot of times because some of them are just not into it, and I understand that.
Well, I, I just know there's some retired folks out there who, who may already have passed your endorsement on their CDL, but, you know, they would definitely need some help to do an application online.
Yeah, we can do that in-house.
Although they'd be, uh, beyond skilled handling the bus, it's just a matter of some type of work.
Oh, yeah, I understand that's your people way, I do.
We do have folks that come in, we'll just say, come in, you know, come in, say, tell us when you come and have somebody sit down with them. We, we do that, not just in transportation, but in other areas.
Registration.
Registration.
All right, we'll finish up this section just to let y'all know. We'll, we'll take a break here about, about 3 o'clock or about 10 till, whenever, whenever we're done with this section. Let everybody have a chance to stretch their legs.
Do I have any other questions about sick leave?
Were you saying, Amy, that we may be able to use some of the ARC money to, to do that? At least for these first couple of years, possibly?
That's something that we've talked about and I just feel like we haven't gotten quite as much input from the transportation area yet. And I know they've been kind of, they've been a little busy.
You could use the ARC for the buyback, but you use the ARC for a bonus.
Like an attendance incentive, not a bonus, I'm calling it a bonus. Uh, it's an attendance incentive, just like with the subs. That is something that has been brought up, but now as to how much, what, what criteria and things, all that has not been hashed out. We don't have 100% go on that because we don't have the detail. Once we have the detail, we run it through our program specialists, but it, then it has to go into a budget amendment and they still, it has to clear two more people at that point. So it is a little bit of a process, but you need to be ready, you need to have every bit of your information. What are your percentages, why are you doing this? You know, what, what specific issues are you having that you call this an attendance incentive? You have to have that all ready to go, and we're not quite to that point. But if we need to pursue that, we can definitely pursue that.
Well, we certainly appreciate our bus drivers and cafeteria workers and clerical and all of those folks. We could not teach our students without them. And I think raising the long-term 25 to 55 is much more than fair. I think that would be great, we can do it.
So we need to look at increasing that, so we have an official request? And then also bring in the seller's schedule from 19 to 30, zero to 35?
I?
We can't, I don't, we're not prepared to vote today.
No, no.
No, 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 it's just we have to prepare. We have to prepare a request for the superintendent and then?
There's an oversight I thought we'd actually, was already done in that 30, Stephen, I just, just mentioned that. I mean, somebody gave us that many years of service, we should be able to give them that extra percentage for the difference between 19 and 27. You said that with the longest 27.
The longer, we have a few that are on step 20, or be on step 27. So we will prepare that information for Mr. Young and then he will push it on through to a board.
What else, also do we need to talk about, Mr. Young?
Can I give you anything else?
Not about transportation, but, um, the five people from the Perry issue. That's a goal.
Okay, the, the five.
Oh, yes. Yes, ESS from last year, yes, that's all, that's taken care of.
That, we already put the request in, they think it was covered under an amendment we had previously done, which saves us about three weeks. And the, as of this morning, the anticipated payday would be 10, it's this Friday. So as long, they, they couldn't 100% say 99.8%, sure, it would be this Friday, so.
I have one more transportation item, and it may be a combination of all three or you, I don't?
Yeah.
I had, and I've heard this before, I've had several recently talk about how they're not allowed to bring a non-school-aged child on the bus with them. You know, if it's a, if it's a mom that has a three-year-old, she can't bring the three-year-old with her on the bus. I don't know to what degree it does affect things, but they seem to act like it prevents some people from driving because they would drive if they could bring that, that child with them on the bus to ride along. So my question was, is there a policy, is it, is it an insurance thing, is there?
Mr. Landrum and I are going to, we're going to speak with our insurance adjuster, hopefully tomorrow's schedules will permit. Stacy, do you have anything on that?
Yeah, um, the, the thing that opened transportation's eyes to this, this happened back in 2009 and 10, when they stopped. It happened across the state, and it was a liability issue because buses didn't have seat belts for child restraint seat, uh, car seats. And they were really concerned about that because they couldn't even touch the ground with their feet and stuff, you know. So that's when it happened and that's when the big push was, was for it. You know, you gotta have a booster seat if it's from 40 to 80 pounds. So that, that was the reasoning, we don't have, uh, safe seat belts on normal buses, we do have them on the special ed buses, but that was where it went to. And, and I'm with Tony, I think our insurance providers should weigh in on this one and, and see. I know, I know, I know of two people in the last four years that said they'd drive if they could bring their child. I know of two, so. Because I've obviously talked to them about it. But it's a good question, I mean, it, you know, it might be one or two.
We'll find out what the insurance adjuster says tomorrow.
Well, I started saying two a lot now.
We got two right now that are driving out their final six-hour loaded, we'll have two new ones there. Got four in class starting today, and they're all in a red seat, it seems. So I'm taking a look with that. By the end of it, by December, we might be in decent shape.
All right, any other topics to? Throw that there.
I think they're entertaining those.
Good question.
I think those are a good, anything we can do. I think really we've brought a lot of oversight over the years, they just didn't.
Well, I, I, honestly, I thought.
I'm glad you brought it to our attention. Any other topics, Mr. Gillen, that you want to come up here and talk to us about? Sure, you can floor.
Really, for people who wasn't there, we did go to the groundbreaking for the new vocational facility agricultural dedicated at, uh, Baines Junior High earlier today. And we, we saw, well, you, you came on up, but we went and saw the new bleachers in the gymnasium, very nice.
Yep.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank y'all, it's done a lot, y'all let us do it.
Yep, you've done the, you've done the heavy lifting along with Mr. Young. Thank you, Ms. Smith, for all of your, your work, I appreciate all that. Let's take a break.
One, one other thing that we had mentioned that I'll just ask, um, the nursing. I know, I know our company numbers have dropped significantly, but just in case that tide turns, are we looking at trying to get some support for the nurses if it gets crazy?
We're already interviewing, and we're also, um, I, I don't know if Amy's been a part of this, but it appears that DPH now is also going to provide a DPH-paid individual to work in the school system. So we are about to add quite a bit of staff, yeah. Ms. Smith, Stacy, Ms. Smith's been interviewing, has she got the, got a person yet or still conducting interviews?
She's still in that process, and she's actually subbing in high school today, we had a nurse out there, so.
Yeah, we've already done that, and that'll be through Cares money. Right, Amy?
Yes.
All right, thank you so much. At this time, I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action or dismissal, or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee order interview applicants for the position of superintendent. Do I have a second for that motion? Second for Mr. Smith, is there any further discussion? All in favor? 5-0, we are adjourned to executive session at 2:44 PM.